The government's ready, then we'll begin. So we'll start with the pledge. So we'll do the introductory roll call, please.
President Coke.
Here.
Vice President Down.
Here.
Treasurer Fritz.
Here.
Senator Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Everard.
Here.
Trustee Gayton.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Here.
Perfect. And next, what final, the conservation effort. When there were two circles, six circles.
Role number six, to foster a conservation ethic among the county citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest and nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to pursue the moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Role number three, to manage its areas in such manner that archaeological and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimal preservation, education, recreation benefits.
Perfect. And then the conservation stewardship pledge. Sean, can I ask you to do that, please? I have to pull up. It's right there.
Oh, okay. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, community of life in current county or quality of life in current county, as I, healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, as shining economy and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. We can promote actions that contribute to clean air.
Thank you. And next, we'll talk the agenda. So, discussion on the agenda and anything pulled or? Matt, let's go ahead. Christine, call the roll.
I'm getting motion.
Motion.
All right. So I make much of the job that agenda as it is. I'll say.
All right, thanks.
Senator Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
Vice President Down.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz.
Yeah.
And President Hunt.
Yes. Okay, next we go to presentations and recognitions. And we have, we talked about at the COW, we talked about the Distinguished Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 2023 from the Government Finance Officers Association. And I love all the initials. There were a lot of. And speak that lingo. But anyhow, I don't think Andy is with us in person, but I think he's on Zooms. And I think we expressed our congratulations. But there was repetition to him and his team, all the work that they do. So Elizabeth, is there anything further to do about this other than to acknowledge it?
No, I just wanted to recognize again their efforts formally, I mentioned under directed report, but appreciate the spotlighting on their efforts and moving to the board and to the staff and everyone as a team effort and me and this leadership has been phenomenal.
So here's a round of applause. So, moving along, we have trustee report. And I believe Lloyd, he's been on my list about giving me a tender with the foundation. And then anyone else that has anything to report?
Okay, two reports, one for Green Drinks and the other one is the foundation.
Let's take it away.
So the foundation, we actually brought up the oak study. We talked about that, they were extremely interested in that, back to ask for copies of it. And I know they had it in their pocket for their meeting with the McHenry County Board today. So they quoted from the study in terms of trees lost since 2000. So it was well received. Most of their meeting is spent on looking at our project list. They endorsed our project list and was a long debate about how best to tackle. Some of the things on there, the projects, the vehicles and the question was, like you asked, should that really be on there? But they understood, no way, that's the kind of thing that rather than going to taxpayers for, that might be the kind of thing they would go after, where they would ask for donations. Discussion about it, they're going to look at trying to, and take direction from in terms of prioritizing and then figure out how best to pursue raising funds for those projects. The green drinks, the discussion there was about roundabouts in McHenry County. And they talked quite a bit about the Woodstock projects are underway currently, a five, five lane intersection is being converted into a roundabout. We talked about how the data shows that people are really opposed to them until they get one. And that's they get used to it, they really like them. Johnsburg in particular, they showed data that, you know, people opposed to it, but now they, now they like them. The number of accidents, stop signs, the history of stop signs, then put in the roundabout and get data going forward, the data shows that accidents are pretty dramatically reduced, but fatalities are what's really dramatically different, 94% reduction in fatalities. So because people are going slower, there still may be accidents, but the sideswipes or the fender benders as opposed to T-bone crashes like you can get at a stop sign. So it was really a pretty interesting, I thought, when I first saw that that was the topic, I thought it'd be like watching paint drive and actually was a pretty interesting presentation. There's a lot more of them coming, several in the next few years from McHenry County.
The two lane roundabouts confuse me a little bit, but that may just be age and, you know, I get easily confused. All right. Any of the other trustees whispering for this time?
Kind of like, where we went, like we did. Well, we had a Farm Bureau meeting last night and there was two people there from the county talking, Mary McCann and I don't know what the other lady, which was, but talking about the 2050 plan. So we had a lot of discussion on that.
Well, we expect you to be here in 2015. And then, Kelly, anything from the county board?
Speaking of 2050 plan, I don't know if I told you guys last time, if you want to have inputs on what, how you want the future of our county to look, go to the county website and you'll see 2050 plan and then you'll, you can fill out a survey and give any input you want on infrastructure, road, there's a, there's a series of questions and then you can cover them for habits. There's not a whole lot going on at the county except for budgeting, of course. Today we had presentations, the committee, the whole meeting from the Northwestern Water Preservation Alliance. If anybody wants the slides from this presentation, I can forward it to you. And then from the conservation, the county conservation foundation. So they really were trying to tell the difference between the conservation foundation and the district. So it was a very good presentation by both. And then some bad news, American Rescue Plant Plan grant requests, we are holding up, I'm looking at any of those until January. So we, as everybody is currently in a budget shortfall, so we're going to see how the current budget goes and we may have to make some hard decisions whether, where this grant money is going to go to grants or state or county. They're going to try to hard, hard to keep it with grants. One minute.
Kelly, if I could just end it, the, as they explained the difference between the foundation and the district, Pam Altoff used a slide, tomato sandwich is the McHenry County Conservation District, a club sandwich with all kinds of fixings and bacon and, you know, stir stick on top of it, all that, that's the foundation. Which she, what she meant by that, as she explained was, the district takes care of the blocking and tackling, the infrastructure, you know, the basics of what's needed. And then the niceties are what the foundation can do. So the example she gave was the Boy Scout camp, Camp Lakota. That's something we didn't have in our budget. It'd be very nice to have the colony, the district and preserve that land. So they bought it and then eventually we'll come to the district. So that was the example.
And as we, you know, we work on communicating, you know, perhaps something can be done maybe through landscapes that highlights the difference and the working relationship between the district and the foundation. Because I certainly didn't know the difference when I was just a member of the general public. All right. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just, I wanted a person to recognize, you know, Elizabeth, you know, the entire district for just being, you know, having a concerned financial awareness, you know, daily. I mean, it's, you know, from someone that, you know, I'm a government auditor, that's what I do, day in and day out. And, you know, I think every year they go through this audit process and I don't want us to breeze over, especially as trustees, and it makes our job very easy to get that type of report back. Because we have confidence that we know that the money is going to the right places, we're accounting for it in the right way, and that you're doing it daily. I mean, it really is a big deal and it helps us, especially, we get questions from the community, we're able to answer them with support based on those statistics. So I just wanted to thank you guys for that. It was a long way.
Wonderful. Well, 10.0 is the president's report and I don't have anything specific to say. Having become president in July, now this is September, we've worked through some of the budgetary issues and we've passed that along. So I think that's an accomplishment that the board has done. And again, the work of Andy and his team presenting us with the data that we needed and Kelly presenting information from the county, I think helped us facilitate that and we had a very lively discussion and I think we were able to come to a decision on things like the detail and wages. And so I think that was, that's an accomplishment. Recognize all of the before that. Looking ahead to the fall, the working group on some financial planning issues is going to be moving and then getting back to us early in November. So we'll be making more strategic decisions regarding the direction that the district will move in. And again, Lloyd and Chris are going to be the board's representatives on that working group with the staff. All right, so now we come to public comments and we're happy to recognize some gentlemen in the front row here. George Thompson, you wish to go first?
Actually, we're gonna go.
What's his name?
Jerry, go first.
Jerry, you're welcome to stand, come to the podium or stay at your seat, whatever you wish.
Thank you. Probably should stand up, I'm sorry. A little nervous about this, sorry. Jerry Gaff, corn man, here on behalf of the Woodstock Snowmobile Club, I'm a trail master with the, with the club and of course a member of the McHenry County Association, so that's why I'm here with these guys. Um, I just want to comment a couple of things. You know, obviously I understand we were denied access to the property and, and I just, for my part, just wanted to make a couple of comments to some points. I did watch the taped meeting that you had last week and there were a couple of points that were brought up that I just wanted to answer, if I may. And I apologize, because when I watch it on the computer screen, it's so small, I can't tell who's talking. So I apologize, I'm not sure who made these comments or whatever, so.
We do that on purpose.
Okay. Somebody was asking, somebody made a point of questioning what our objective was. Okay. Our objective is to provide a safer trail for the riders that ride our trails. Our, our plan last year, although we didn't have snow, some of Beverly rode the trail, was that Wonder Lake marked down the ditch along Queen Anne Road to join up with us at Allendale and Queen Anne. Um, you're snowmobiler, you probably know it's, you're so much nicer riding on a marked trail than it is in a ditch. I mean, it's safer, not that it can't be done safely in the ditch, but it's easier for us to mark, maintain, and groom a trail if it's on a field instead of in a ditch. So our objective is to try and get us out of the ditches, into the fields, into the, into anywhere where it's safe to ride. Okay, I mean, that's, that's, my job as trail master, provide safe trails, same thing with George for his club. So that was our objective. I mean, either way, we would, you know, either way, we will run a trail down the road, because we will connect with Wonder Lake, it's just we'd like to get out of the ditch. Okay, so that's really our objective here, it's, you know. And again, the other thing I guess I would make a comment about the trail is that unlike over in Glacial Ridge or Glacial Park, where there are permanent trails, our trails over in Woodstock into the west end of the county are, they're arbitrary. I mean, I can mark across a trail or across a field from corner to corner, I can go down and make a sharp 90 degree, it's, it's on me as to how I want to mark it. The point I, point I'm making is, the trail, the access we were asking for, doesn't have to be carved in stone. If you guys can help us define maybe a better path across the property, it's, you know, first of all, it's not going to be on the map, at least not yet, we're not printing new maps yet. But the point is, we can, we can move the trail if there's an issue. It doesn't have to be exactly where we grew it. And if there's a problem, we can close it, we can put it back on the road. Right? I mean, if we, if we were granted permission and there became a problem this year, next year we move it to the road. It's, it's that plain and simple, we have, point is, we have options. What else did I want to make a point of that I had heard? Somebody made a comment about option one, saying that because it went across a concrete bridge, it was done out of the question, period out. Um, we have access as to you, to grant money for things like bridges and stuff like that. So if any part of option one were doable, we could apply for a grant, put in guardrails on a concrete bridge, we could put in a grant to put a bridge next to the bridge or anywhere deemed acceptable. You know, kind of like you guys have done or we've done with you in Glacial Ridge, Glacial Park is to, you know, put in grants for bridges. So I mean, anything of that nature, if that would help option one, because I did hear a comment said, well, because it's going across a concrete bridge, boom, done, out, we're not considering it. So, I mean, there are options that we can handle, you know, if, if that would help. Um, what else did I want to? Oh, and a question I had, and I, and I apologize, because I don't have a map that hold in front of somebody of option one or two. But, and I know this is comments, that question, but can somebody show me where the eagle's nest is? Because I'm, I don't know if anybody's ever put an X on a map and said, this is where the nest is. Because from what I can see on Google Maps, we're no closer than probably 800 or 1,000 feet on option two, to any trees or tree line or even that, even that creek that's running along the property. And that's only at the corner of the field where we go around, which, you know, is obviously it's just a, a moment of time that you're riding the sled past that one particular point. So I honestly, I don't know where the eagle's nest is, so I'm not sure I can, you know, so if there's somebody that could help me with that, after the meeting, or somebody on MCCB could reach out to me and show me that, I can't, I can't exactly.
If we told you where the nest was, we might have to kill you.
I'll take that chance. For the good of the county, for the club.
I think the majority of us don't know where the nest is. But, but your point perhaps is well taken about the distance between your proposed route and the nest. I know there are some federal guidelines that, that the staff was trying to stay within when it comes to a certain type of wildlife impacts. So you may have to take our word for it, that the proposal was within that distance, whatever that distance is.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, and I, and I guess the next comment I would make, or question I would add is, I mean, should the eagles not be there next year? Is this, does, could this be brought back up again? Is this, you know, a viable possibility then? Because one of the, one of the advantages, and I did hear somebody comment, again, I'm not sure who, said the eagles nest early, but we don't mark our snowmobile trails till Thanksgiving weekend. So typically, there's no leaves in the trees, so if there's an eagle's nest, you, me, anybody, whoever MCCB is watching it, monitoring it, would know if it's there or not. So if it wasn't at that point, and, and somebody informed us, we could, with your permission, use your property that year instead of marking the road as we would intend. So.
I think all those are very good points and that points that I think we're going to get into the discussion of this evening, but points that we're going to keep in mind and I think you will hear back from us, whether it's in time for this season or, you know, in the future. But I understand there's, I'm not a snowmobiler, but I understand there's a working relationship between the various snowmobile clubs and the staff of the district.
Yeah.
So this should not be a sort of something that blows up that ongoing relationship. And next year's a different year and the eagles move, the tree falls down, whatever, things would be different.
Show me that tree.
All right, let's move along, because I think your friends.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And about the roundabout, Johnsburg, I think it was Woodstock.
Hello, I'm Peter Reiki, I'm president of the Wonder Lake Club and trail advisor for Northeast Illinois for the Illinois Association of Snowmobile Clubs. I'd like to thank you for reviewing our trail request again. This has been our fourth time we've tried to make this connection over the years to no avail. And like you said, we've worked with Ben and back in the day when Glenn was still there, Glenn actually went out there with us and did a road trip across the property and thought, you know, he had a route marked a few years back before he retired. And that was also shut down back then, so. We did go through the proper channel, you know, we talked to Ben and then we got permission from all our landowners on both sides and then we made a presentation to you guys and sent in our request. So, you know, that's why this last year we marked it while we were waiting to hear back from you guys to see how it would work out. And, you know, going forward, you know, we would just like to know how we could work with you guys to create a safe trail. Even if it's this year, there's two grass strips that run parallel to Queen Anne Road, even if it's getting off the road for those two sections, you know, for this year, at least it would just start, even if we don't get to work our way all the way around back. So that could be a third option, you know, you know, something to make it a little bit safer this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. We save the best for last.
Oh, you think you must. George Thompson, Illinois Snow Association president. It's not a bunch, I don't like it. It's pretty rough sometimes, you know, to give you all the glory and all the headings at the same time when they're paying dollars on you. So, Billy's going to hand out some stuff that we talked about, this is our fact of convention, this is all put together by AXA, which is United States Action Mobile, they want from snowmobile, the impact of a snowmobile next to it. My biggest thing, and I'm trying to keep a nice and short, because I'm not that good at talking, is the relationship with Henry County Snowmobile Association. You look back and by all times, the first trail, and a piece of land that was donated to MCCB in the park, Glacial Park, I don't buy all your other ones here, but was a canal, you said you guys straight up put that in a creek, there was a trail on it, Woodstock from Northern Park, they donated it. That was cool. But I looked back, started looking at some of the grants now. Some of the grants that we get now is public, Steph Grant or Snow, so grants, municipal Steph Grant is outside. But all that grant money comes from snowmobile registration. Okay, buy a little sticker, 50% of that money goes in DNR for administrative and law enforcement, the other 50% goes to these grants. So way back when, let's see, 1979, looking at McHenry County Conservation District, we got applied for grants to our snow grant fund, okay? 1979, we had the first thing called Verdipac Creek Trail for $29,116. Good money back then. Then in 1981, McHenry County Conservation District, Piper, another one, and this was a different secret trail too. These were all issued. That was $236,879. I think it had something, we probably would buy some of this part. Then in 1983, which is a couple of years later, we was called McHenry County Conservation District, another different scene land acquisition for a money of $27,350. We're helping you guys out, we're helping, we're helping start the McHenry County Conservation. Then, last one I wanted to bring up, and there's been a lot of other, it's another land purchase in 1984, McHenry County Conservation District, the different steam, different sink extension, Greenwood, so it must be getting more of that part. And then we was for $62,800. Now, I don't know. We've done a lot, we push a lot, we help a lot, we try to get this trail particularly quite a few times now. And I can't see anything where we are impacting a problem. You know, the stuff that we see and we hear, go to international Congress every year that we're hosting, if you guys want to come down, you might hear the same too much. But this is what we talk about, this is what we expect. When it comes to snowmobiling, I have a trail way out front of my yard, there's numerous sites, I don't even hear them, I don't hear them. Okay, so I don't, can't see lots. If you look at some of that stuff when it comes to compassion, you're bringing up that hydraulic stone you said earlier, I'm not sure what that is, okay? Snowmobiles give the least amount per square inch, a half inch, half a ton per square inch an inch, so. You're looking at stuff, look what your horses do, you guys got horse trails all over. You're looking at stuff, look what your horses do, you guys got horse trails all over the place, just people walking. Is alive, right? And. Birds and stuff, you got nothing in there, they, they did studies on Yellowstone Park about eagles and stuff, how it doesn't even affect this. We have a, if you, if you go out north and walk the Minnesota, Michigan, there's a trail, there's one through some power lines, they built eagles nests. At top of the power lines. The trail was now interior, you go down to it, eagles, it's like, it's one of the coolest things in the world. You see, you feel like you're flying with the United States, I'm like the eagle fly, so. I don't know. What you guys have really been so. Cause when I see all this, it just doesn't make sense to me, alright? Um, but I'd like to see reconsiderance. We've done a lot in past health, we've done a lot in past trips to a local one. Big bridge there in the creek. In Glacier Park is a good sized bridge, that was paid through our money. You know, you guys, you walk over it now and. Where else parties, no, but it's for whatever, it's just a lot of things that. I don't think that. We were around. You guys. Would have a lot hard time to get going back in the day. So, that's all I have to say.
George, thanks for your comments and, uh, for those of us who are not snowmobilers, um. You know, connecting the dots between your fees that you pay, um, and then the grants that the district benefits from. Um, that's, uh, enlightening and. We have relationships with a lot of, um, um, groups, whether it be the. The, the horseback riders or the hunters, Duckson Limited and, you know, other organizations that, um. Um, through their, um, members' fees, then monies are directed. You know, to back to organizations such as ours, so, um. I, I think that's, uh, that's worthy of consideration and, and, um. I don't think it's, there's any type of adversarial thing here between, uh, the district, the. The board of trustees, the staff, uh, and the snowmobilers, or you as an individual or. Yeah, you know.
I, I just, I just kind of wonder why.
I mean, I, I, I think, um.
I just kind of wonder why though. Like the horses. They just made it a ten boom boom and also we got horse trails, everything all over the set because that's an animal. Were motorized, that's all I've been thinking.
Yeah.
Um, but again, we do a lot with standards, I guarantee you. If you guys needed help fixing something on it, you'll get a lot more help out of snowmobile than anybody else. Cause we do work, yeah.
I mean, just ask if any of the trustees have any comments for these gentlemen, comments or questions specifically. Otherwise, we're going to try to move ahead with our meeting and we will. You know, we will continue this dialogue.
Yeah, I, I would say, maybe we can talk with staff again a little bit and see if there's. Any other options that might work. And try to make some.
Alright. Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to, uh? Talk or throw anything at us? Alright, um, then the next, uh, item is the consent agenda.
I made moves that read about the consent agenda.
Very well, I'm a second, I battle second.
Um, twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, August eighth, twenty twenty-one, first of all, financial workshop. Twelve point one B, August eighteen, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the whole. Twelve point one C, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, bring the meeting. Twelve point two, acceptance of treasurer's report, twelve point two A, acceptance of treasurer's report for August reverse, twenty twenty-two. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-two, accepting the common ancestor and annual financial report as prepared. By Siget by four fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-three. Authorizing acceptance, execution and filing of related certificates. Of a public fund annual statement, Marcus moved your twenty twenty-two, twelve point five, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-four. A resolution in system that twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Marketing plan as presented, twelve point six, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-five. Approving sale of one. Point one, eight seven acres of wetland credit to the Department of Transportation for a total sale. At very six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Twelve point seven, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-six, uh, authorizing the executive director to send a letter of support for the. Transportation. An enhancement program for grant funding for shared map along the back of the road. Twelve point eight, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-seven, authorizing middle of an Illinois Department of Commerce and economic opportunity tourism. And best program proposal to support building renovations, site enhancement at the lost valley visitor center. Twelve point nine, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-eight. Awarding a contract to the three companies, L T D, the most responsible bidder. For the Prairie Trail South Stream Erosion and Transplantation Project for eight hundred. And thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. And then since they split and alternates, one, two, three, and four. Twelve point ten, authorization to prepare and was our piece to develop. And experimental three-year conservation reasons for small unmatched section of the.
Thank you.
And there is an amendment that is not unannotated for some reason in the lines it got cut off, but it was on the published agenda. And that would be July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the whole executive session. So if you can add that if you're agreeable to that motion, adding that. Yeah, twelve point one A, July twenty-first, twenty twenty, give the whole executive session.
Let's see, we do the honors, please.
Sure will, Freddy Gayton.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas, yes, Jesse Zimmerman.
Yes.
Jesse Everard.
Yes.
President Adam.
Yes.
Treasure Prince.
Yeah.
And President Coke.
Yes. Thank you. Fourteen point O, the executive directive.
Um, I will be gone, uh, next week to the National Recreation Park Association conference, thank you so much, I will be joined by Chief King. Uh, she is presenting, um, on Thursday during the conference, so I'm really excited about that. Um, during my absence, Director of Finance Administration Dialax will be Director Desert A in charge. So it's his turn and, um, I'll keep it short to see if he can, I think, uh, snowmobile, uh, clubs in your interest in coming forward. And, uh, I'm happy to move the conversation. From my head, thank you.
That is, uh. Kept me from going off the rails because I forgot to do the, uh. Financial part, thirteen point one. Uh, so, our treasurer will.
Yeah, motion.
Yeah.
I need motion approval of bill table for the month of August twenty twenty-two.
So much.
I second.
Okay, Sean and, uh, remember.
Minutes, did anybody?
I did. If anybody asked him. Uh, A one-one-three-zero zealers. Ace, eight oh seven seventy. R eight, seven oh seven rush truck for forty-five eighty. S five four nine five, self and food for a hundred dollars and thirty percent.
Thirteen point one B. Consideration of group payment of bills is indicated that submission of bills pending report for the month ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second. You're moving, so we need a second, let me move in a second. And the role.
They've already offered it, so. Right, so we never actually ordered it, yeah. Motion, uh, second, yeah, thirteen point one. Correct.
Yeah, your approval of the bills, you already made that motion.
Yeah, yes.
And so now, uh. Which is part of your, I'm consenting agenda, right, I'm consenting, I'm sorry. The consideration of the payment of bills, it's just something I'm not sure, so all thirteen. All of it. Vice President Down.
Uh, yes.
Jesse Everard.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas, yes. Jesse Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasure Prince.
Yes.
Jesse Gay.
Yes.
President Coke.
Yes.
Okay, now, thirteen point two, twenty twenty-two property tax, levy extension and truth in taxation ordinance. Number twenty-two dash ten nineteen, consideration of the past ordinance. Twenty-two dash ten nineteen, establishing the levy assessment and property taxes for the Kennedy County Constancy District. Calendar year twenty twenty-two, collective calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Sean, one second, yeah.
Who was the first, I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
I mean.
Ready, okay, Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Jesse Everard.
Yes.
Vice President Down.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas? Yes. Jesse Zimmerman.
Yes.
Jesse Gayton.
Yes.
President Coke.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, it's, uh, we had the executive director report, uh, we appreciate you kind of. We, uh. We talked about our committee assignments, I think we've done that. Um, is there anything else anyone wishes to bring up at this time? Does our public wish to make any more comments? Gentlemen, would you like to talk to us?
Please.
Yeah, please, just identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Scott Schwindorff, I am the past president of the Harvard Snowmobile Club. I had a brief chance this morning to listen to the tape of the. Um, meeting that you had regarding the snowmobile proposed trail. And I just had a couple of comments and suggestions, or not comments and suggestions, a couple of comments and questions. Um. I was a little confused when, when the discussion talked about the nest building. Uh, season. And I, I believe I heard that that was in the late fall. And that having snowmobiles out there in the winter would disrupt that, and I did not understand that, am I misunderstanding what was said? It's the person who spoke to length about eagles.
Here, is our, my chime in, and I'd be happy to.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, so we just stuff up here.
Sure, come on.
Alright, yeah, so it, it's actually kind of involved, um. Every time there's a danger of threatened species, whether it's a plant or animal, we have to do an element of turn, so we actually have to report it. And then it goes to the state, it's kind of in this archive. So it's not only for in the county, but there's state and federal protection. So there's actually something called the Bald Eagle Protection Act, and so that protects eagles themselves and their nests.
Is that state, federal?
It's federal, it's federal.
In your meeting, you said there were no federal regulations regarding bald eagles normally.
That, so I'm, I, I'm not sure if you misunderstood it, especially with the fall thing, so. And there's, there's actually a written report that went along with it, I don't know if that's available to everybody in our board packet or not. But that's very helpful because that actually shows the timeline of when, when the, when nesting occurs, when, um. Porch occurs, when egg laying occurs and all that, so there, there's the schedule, and it's not in the fall, this, this time of year into the fall. Anything goes, cause the eagles are not there, they're not at their nest. But when, when January, February comes around, that's when they start porch, that's when they start nesting, that's the critical time. No, and I said, I know it's hard, I said, that's why I'm here, because you can't hear everything.
And I was trying to listen.
I understand, yeah, um, so, so that's the critical time is, is, um, during January, February. And that's what, that's what our concern is, is us, is that, and it's all.
And you said that the issue is regarding noise, right, okay, well. And I also understand that that nest is right by a road. Road has car noise, roads, you'd find me a snowmobile that's anywhere near as loud as three quarters of the Harley Davidson's to drive around this county and I'll be. I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
Do whatever.
So, yeah.
Um, and, and your other comment was that the noise might disrupt them. Well, so you are. You as a group are turning down our proposal based on a might.
Right, so, so thi- this is the other thing I didn't mention, but it's actually in the report, so. Once an eagle nest is established, there is total protection, so what would happen is if. If this, if this board or Snowmobile Club decided to put a trail in there and something happens that nests and there, I can read you the language verbatim, but. Yes, basically, if they don't nest there, if they abandon that nest, there's literally a two hundred thousand dollar fine. And jail time that goes along with it, and that's exactly in that bald eagle and gold eagle protection act. So I didn't mention that, but that is actually in the report.
If someone were to disrupt that nest.
Absolutely.
So if I were to go cut down the tree.
No, 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 that for sure, but also if, if there was an activity, if there was a fireworks display during that critical time or. Or a snowmobile trail literally could disrupt that nesting behavior, that's how, how much they're protected.
But it could, not will.
So here's the thing, so from a biologist perspective, I would say. This is a concern, but from a risk management perspective, if, if this board is liable, that's a huge concern. So I, I, I don't really ask that, the bald eagles are the ones, whether they stay with that nest or not, that's what we have to watch.
Now, didn't you also say that the bald eagles will in fact get accustomed to noise?
So this is what happens over time, so that's what, like. We, we actually led in the last board meeting, we talked about the nest that's along the Piscasaw between Boone and the Kennedy County. They developed that nest, knowing where the car traffic was and it was all established. So this nest is here and it's, it's quite a ways off the road. Um, but there's no snowmobile activity in that area, so if you brought a new disturbance in. And I, and I don't know all the rules as far as it's day and night, lights, noise, visual, you know, snowmobiles going back and forth. If that would disrupt a nesting pair, but the original, you know, the original trail went right by the nest on that concrete bridge, that was the proposal. But then, so that would be a problem for sure, this other one is moved, but there's no buffer, no other forested area, it's all open field. Whatever way the snowmobiles are going, in theory, they would be, their lights will be bouncing up and down, going right on. That area where the nest is at, so that's the concern, and so me, from my perspective, I think it's, it's a concern. And again, it's, it's this board's perspective that, hey, is, is it worth that risk? Um, to allow snowmobiles that could disrupt that nest.
Okay, and my, my only other comment is that the amount of sled traffic that would be using that trail would be very minimal. It's, it would be local people only, right? And snowmobiles are strictly monitored and, uh. Built to have acceptable noise level. I, I don't, for me, I don't see the problem. You sound like much more of an expert than me.
I'm not an expert, I, but, but we have to have that concern, it, it is a concern.
Okay.
And that's my job to, to let the board know, hey, this, this could be a problem.
Could be, so we are not having recreation because of a could be.
We, and that's the other thing, you, somebody brought up multiple use, we do that with. You know, bouncing hunting with, with trails, we, we do it all, we, we have to decide on multiple use on every site nearby.
I understand that. And the man's like, that showed that there were. Several trails.
Just seven trails.
No, I'm saying, if it's other trail, but, so, as you're saying, in terms of, it's not like we're not trying to work with snowmobiles. There are many trails, several trails on district property. I agree, and there are also many snowmobile trails that were paid for with snowmobile funds that are now multi-use trails. Bicycleists, horseback riders. They all use the trails that the snowmobile funds paid for. And we get no help from any of those clubs, I just think that we're being singled out here and I'm not happy about it.
I'm sure it's disgusting, I didn't think it was a discussion. I mean, what, um, area down there, by the bridge, how come there's a pattern, it's always striking.
Right.
Sixty thousand. But, uh, we got some honey stuff falling down, I didn't know where the eagles at.
Yes, but, but that's behind, no, no, I, I, I understand and. Right. Yeah, well, there, there's a waterfall program there, there's not a deer hunting program there, but, but that's the whole thing. In the fall, to a certain point, that's where the hunters would be in there and tractors are going up and down, but. Remember, there, that's not when the eagles are even there, the nesting period is in that late January, February time period. And they actually have chicks early, so that's, there, there's no fall nesting, it's actually in the late winter, early spring is when they nest, that's the critical period. It's actually in the late winter, early spring is when they nest, that's the critical period, so sometime, and that's, you know, we're going off as. Biologists who've done these studies, and when that chart is, and that's, is that that January, February, March period is the most critical time. And unfortunately, it coincides right for the snowmobiles, and that's the best data that we have to work.
We're gonna give you, okay, we're gonna give you the last word, and then we appreciate.
Is there a federal guideline on how, like, a buffer, it's gotta be two thousand feet?
There, there absolutely is, and that's, uh, it's a bald eagle management plan, and so, yeah, what they recommend, and there's different levels. If, um, it's three hundred, three hundred thirty feet, six hundred sixty feet, or larger, depending on what level of surface is.
So like an option three of just staying a lot, parallel with Queen Anne Road on those couple of grass buffers could be an option?
Yeah, we would, I want to say. And like I said, that's road traffic, so that's not under recent disturbance right there.
Oh, I'm very. Okay, so, but on that full edge, and I'm gonna follow, so, he's all the way along, that's what's. All the way on that edge, what is it closest to that eagle's nest, two is closest, we, we have that buffers.
It's kind of, it's about eleven, it's about eleven hundred feet from the edge of the property, and so that's four hundred fifty feet from the, the, the round road that goes in there.
We're, 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 we kind of go around the edge, we know where to go on the gravel, and it's awesome. And on the only back edge, I told you, it's there, and, and maybe the only farm buildings.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so, even if we went through the farm buildings, kind of come around, that's kind of the.
That's kind of the thousand, is eleven hundred feet. And this is sixteen.
Alright, well, gentlemen, I hope you feel that you've been listened to. I, I've enjoyed the, the back and forth, um, and I appreciate Brad sort of wanting to ring with you, and. And having a very brave discussion, and I hope you appreciate, you know, his taking the time and. So, in other words, and. In other words, we're only gonna get so far at the meeting, and I think there's been a, an exchange of information, but maybe, um. You know, maybe this can, uh, move forward and, well, uh. In a way that, um, I can satisfy, um, your group and satisfy the Conservation District, which. You know, is responsible for, uh. This issue at many different levels, um, and so, you know, you have a volunteer board, you have. Uh, we have a staff of professionals, um, and you folks obviously interested. Uh, taxpayers and taxpayers, and, and you've been supportive of, of the district, um. So, um, you know, um, there ought to be some type of, uh. Way that, uh. Fair and equitable. But maybe this can be resolved, I'm not gonna give you a timeline, I wouldn't hold my breath. Um, but we will continue to work with the staff, and, uh. And if we need additional information, we will, we will contact, and, uh, so. I've had my, so, do you have one else want to chime in on this? Okay, thank you. We've done with public comments too, any other public comments? Chris, anybody out there in the neighborhood?
No.
There's no one online.
Waiting for a motion to return, so, all right, Chris Rose, the way to turn.
Second.
Second rail, second then.
Tracy Dimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Tracy Everard.
Yeah.
Vice President, uh, Vice President Dow.
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yeah.
Freddy Gayton.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yeah.